downtown Albuquerque about two years ago. I live right on Central, on 7th and Central. I run a gallery for people with developmental disabilities as well as the community of artists that are down there. In my experience with being down there, I have the opportunity to have a rooftop kind of view of downtown Albuquerque. And I see on Sunday nights the culture of downtown Albuquerque and how really awesome it is and how it should be promoted as something that Albuquerque has as kind of their own jewel. A lot of the times, it's old schoolers, and I have a really funny story. I went down and I walked down into the streets and I was speaking with this lowrider guy. And I first moved down there and he said, hey, so, no, I think, but listen to this. He goes, so, uh, what's up with your drink? And I was like, you can't drink on the street. He said, you know, I made like a Coke. Sure, and then he goes, and I made some good sandwiches today. So needless to say, they gave me a ride in their most beautiful car. And I went up to downtown Central and, you know, it was kind of an eye-opener for me. And I thought, you know, this is really the best part of Albuquerque. And sometimes, you know, there's a lot of cruisers down there, there's a lot of action. But I think if we could do some kind of a program development or get some kind of a, something going with the Albuquerque Police Department, it would be kind of a draw for people here in Albuquerque. I've been to a lot of places and there's no place like downtown Albuquerque. So my proposal to the Department of Justice is this. I am willing to teach classes and help people recognize people. Because of my profession of occupational therapy, we are taught how to recognize tics and target dyskinesia and Tourette's Syndrome, I don't know if anybody's familiar with that. I've been working with some people out of, in LA. And they teach wellness classes and mindfulness classes to soldiers of PTSD. And so I'm trying to bring all this together and also, you know, help. I see homeless people every day and a lot of them are veterans and a lot of them have mental health issues. And really, they're just like that guy offering somebody a sandwich, you know. They're very nice, they, they offer, you know, they don't, I'm not afraid to walk downtown by myself. And so that was, that would be my, my opportunity to, um, Albuquerque.
The lady that's gonna speak to you now, you know, I always said we need to hook up. Stephanie Locas is here with us. This woman has the hardest job. She's in charge in some of these states of all the rank and file. Stephanie Locas is the president of the Albuquerque Police Officers Association. And we need all to work together because everything that we say, she listens to. And maybe there is something in that she needs from you. So if we don't support each other and we don't support her in this process, how is she gonna take the word back to the rank and file? Because look out, that's who takes it back. The mayor doesn't take it back, the mayor doesn't take it back, Stephanie does. And I agree, we need to acknowledge her presence because she's brave to be here. I can trust her, she's a local.
First and foremost, I want you guys to know that I'm here because I don't live in the southeast, just like, I didn't live in the northeast yesterday. Unfortunately, I missed the West Side Community Meeting that they have. And that's the part of the town that I live in and I was born and raised in. This is my community as well, not just as patrolling an officer. This is a newly elected position for me that I've been in in the past year. And it's not to spy for the rank and file or the police or, like you said, to take back information. It's to learn how to build a better relationship with the community. Because if I'm not hearing from the community what itself is the problem is, and I know it's hard for officers to hear because it does seem at times, especially when we're in city council, that there's so much anger and frustration on the community's part. The officers have that same anger and frustration too, just for different, from a different point. And it doesn't get relayed necessarily, you know, talking to the city councilors. I'm in communication with them a lot at times as well. And I think what people don't understand is that our city administration is not the same as our department administration. And the department administration technically doesn't always trickle down to the rank and file on the street. Police officers have a job to do, they do the job that they're told to do. And a lot of times that chain is broken with communication as it was with the community. And me being in the position that I'm in now, I want to find a better way to fix it. You know, I, I speak to panelists when I come in and the other people that have lost a family member to somebody who was killed by a police officer. And it's, you know, it's unfortunate that they lost a loved one. And I try to picture myself as that sister, as that mother, as that daughter. And how they might be feeling to have lost somebody, any family member or just anybody that you know. I'm a military veteran myself. And I think back to how people portray this with their parent military department. It's similar to one, but not even necessarily close because I, I've been overseas. And I, like I said, it's, it's, it's a lot more difficult than the military and I agree with you. It comes from a higher portion. It's not just from the department itself, it's from the administration, it's from the state and it's from the government that we have ourselves. Because the same thing, I had a reporter ask me today, is, you know, when those postings on Facebook. Police officers and government employees don't have the opportunity to have the same freedom of speech as your average citizen. And I think that's what makes it difficult for them is that they do find ways to vent their frustrations and do it anonymously. And that's the unfortunate part is that you don't have the ability to walk up to an officer and ask how they feel about something because they don't have that opportunity. Our standard operating procedure prohibits them from being able to speak freely to you on what they actually think or how they actually feel. Because it doesn't allow it to without them facing some sort of disability. So when you have an officer not giving you a comment or not wanting to speak to you about something, it's not because they're just, they're being rude or that they just don't wanna talk to you or it's a blue wall of silence, it's not necessarily that. It's the fact that they do not have that opportunity. I'm in a different position now, being in an elected position now from my rank and file. And I'm who they choose to speak on their behalf. So like I said, I don't wanna just be here to speak on their behalf, I wanna hear your concerns. Like Ms. Bautista said, so I can take it back to them and I can find a way to work with my city councilors and the mayor and the city administration and the department administration to say, hey, here's what their concerns were, I was there, I heard it, these are individuals I heard it from. I try to attend as many city council meetings as I can. I try to be everywhere that I can possibly be, which is very, very difficult because there's not enough to be everywhere where I need to be. But I do want you guys to know that we are very, very concerned. And like I told the reporter that was asking me today, the police officers that you have here are here because they truly want to be here and they want to make the community better and they want to protect and serve their community. And out here because they have to be here because there's law enforcement hurting everywhere. And that's what I say is that, you know, with the way it's hurting in our state, there's the ability to go to any other department because every department is short. I just came back from a training that was very beneficial to me because I got to meet with other agencies from around the nation, from Australia and from Canada. And the sad part about it is, when you're looking around our entire nation, is that law enforcement is hurting in every facet you can imagine with a shortage of officers. And I think what's hard now is that we just don't have a generation that wants to be civil servants anymore, even in, in high schools. And you know what, I know there's a lot of teachers here and that's great, you know, because I think our, our education is struggling as well. And when they're being educated, those that can graduate and make it through it is they're being taught a different thing. You don't teach trade schools in high school no more. They're not going through elections of trade schools to be servants, you know, and to be blue collar workers. So there are law locks and there's interns in popular and they're teaching them to be better educated, which is great, but in the same sense, it's depleting, it's depleting your, your civil service.
The one thing, yes, we can ask you a question. The one, anybody who wants to ask Stephanie a question. There's one thing I wanna say that's really important is that Mayor Berry got it, the APD budget. We had an internal auditor talk to us yesterday. The money that was taken out was for training, EWI, and, and things that the officers might need it, the cell cameras and such. We know that somehow another million dollars was put back in now that DOJ is here. The problem is this, we're still short 300 officers. So that means it's been budgeted. So we have to hold them accountable for where that money has been spent since officers have not been hired. So if you multiply 300 officers and whatever it is that they come in at, that's how much money was available in the budget that she could use.
Should we really be hiring 300 officers at this present time?
Yes.
Well, let's, let's just, oh, we've been calling.
What is, what is the, what is the union's stance on the cell cameras? And I know the union in the past has given $600 to police officers with fatally wounded people in the past. Is there any type of sanctions for someone that doesn't follow the cell cameras ordinance or standard operating procedure?
The union doesn't have the, we don't have any say in the disciplinary process of how it is. There is disciplinary process and I want people to be aware of that.
Enough of the disciplinarians, that's what I'm saying. You guys have taken the, you guys have taken the incentive in the past to reward them for something that you have acquired.
That's, that's not a reward. I know a lot of times, and that was obviously my predecessor before I came into this, and the media portrays it as a bounty. It was never meant to be a bounty or that's not what it was for. Because as you can see, when the media ends up getting an officer, I think people see it from one perspective and see what they want the media portraying you. So it wasn't a bounty, it was for the ability for an officer to be able to get away from being in the limelight of the media and to have his face on there, to have his family's face on there or his history on there for those that knew him. I mean, I can tell you, and it's, it's, it should be about us and them. We do support the cell cameras. I mean, we think that they need to be there for accountability. There's, there's not a problem with it, it's how that they're being used. I mean, because personally, I don't think that they should be run the entire shift. Because we are leaving at the same time too. I mean, because if you're gonna do that, why not just put a cell camera on every building and on every street light and not have officers and save that much more money?
They should.
They should, they should have full surveillance of all Americans.
For three hours, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The police hawks they were falling out for three hours?
I, I have, I don't know the specifics of that because I'm not a part of the investigation. I'm, I'm there for their working conditions, for their welfare, for any type of salary that needs to be there to make sure that them and their families are taken care of to a certain extent too. But I want everybody to know that, that it's not a bounty. It's to make sure that they have the opportunity to be compressed and to take their families with them if they need to go. And it's not given to them in cash. They have to show that they've actually went out of town or that they may be taking flights somewhere. And it's the association that reimburses them. So it wasn't just like, oh, you know, you were involved in shooting here, here's a check of $500. That's, you guys, that's the wrong image of that.
I was just using that as an example because you didn't have to do that. So I'm just wondering, why do we do it?
Well, I think that's, that's a really important question.
Well, my real life question was about the cell cameras, what the officials ask the union.
And then there's, we do support, we do support, we just don't support the fact that they should be used for the entire shift. But they definitely need to be there for the accountability and for contact and it seems this one, they're there. So we do support the cell cameras.
Stephanie, does the union support the CIT team? The specialized team that know, they're trained to deal with people with no one's law?
Yes, we do. I, I'm a CIT trained officer as well during the time, the 14 years that I've spent on the field. We do, and I, and I advocated on that before the administration came up with that. I told them that everybody should be in that 40-hour block. I'm glad to see that it got implemented and I'm glad to see that they're gonna put a lot more people into the negotiation stance. Because what it was is you get a small block here at the academy, but then if you want to become a crisis intervention trained officer, you go through 40 hours more of training. And if you are interested in becoming a crisis negotiator, you go through an institute of training on top of that. So you're at a third reason, and I, I'm glad with the department.
Does the union support that specialized country?
Yes, we do support that thing. I'm sorry, Mr. Ramon?
I'm listening, I'm listening to you. There's a gentleman back there with, that's the waiting and, sir, could you please say something?
I just don't understand why we're talking about putting 300 more officers out on the street. And we're taking proceeds away from education, which obviously is something that's also needed within the APD office as well. It's no secret that this state is one of the lowest in education.
Second poorest.
It's definitely the worst. And so when you have officers that are coming from up out of that type of education as well and then they're given a gun, that changes the whole profile.
The culture of the drug dealers?
So I don't understand why we're not looking down at education. It takes you the culture instead of trying to put more officers out of the street that don't have that understanding of the culture they're involved in.
How many of you guys thought numbers? Okay, because if that's something that you feel, that's your recommendation to DOJ. If you feel, you know, media's gonna be officers.
City council also.
That's what I was gonna say. We have city campaigns, it's public, the voice you're picking, you have two minutes every first Monday and every third Monday of the month. And it's on the record, it's on the record of.
That's been, that's been happening for years.
Well, try to be sober when you go. Try not to be hard on judges when you go.
I understand.
Try to be sober when you go.
I was gonna say that the reason why you need to have even more officers in the street, not to take away from education, because I don't want to do that either. Obviously, I have two school-aged children as well to go. And I agree with you, that's what's frustrating is that, you know, we are on the lowest level for poverty and we are in the top five lowest for poverty and we are in the top three lowest for education, which is unfortunate. And it needs to be better and the same thing, our two, our two.
Okay, but one of the first things, one of our elected governors, David, who come in here took a million away from it.
That's right.
And he made a million dollars.
Martinez, the mayor are responsible for the budget.
I can assure you, the officers have not seen an increase in pay in any sort in the past five years.
My point is, is just, we don't need more officers when we can't even control the ones that are out there right now.
Well, we can't control the drug dealers here. We can't control the drug dealers ruining our community. Okay, that's what it comes down to, the drug problem.
Thank you, sir. We, Stephanie, I appreciate you taking the time to come here. And I think appreciate, appreciate what you told us, come and talk. Cause we have other APD officials here to say hi.
Look around the door and ask.
Isn't he so nice, he's up next to his feet now?
Let me say something here. We really need silence for this part. Because if we have a problem with the mayor, the only way to get the mayor out there and turn them over is to talk, is to do a recall. However, you have to understand the reality of that. This gentleman knows those numbers, he's gonna tell them exactly where they are.
We'll have them take entry.
Actually, I'm a mind-boggling, or I feel, kind of, it may be widening the picture a little bit. I think in some ways, a little, in some ways, we're, we're trying to fight a war within ourselves because it's all about us. We're the cause of everything happening to us. We have made this happen for years, not being responsible for our communities. So what we have to do is we can't blame the police because it's like blaming the infantry in an army. You've got to be the top. Who is causing all these laws to happen? All outrageous amount of laws and outrageous amount of time that you're giving people for a crime. We'll be outlawed if we keep going this route. There's no way to keep up financially or how many people do we wanna have on parole probation that can't go to work? I drove by the day by First Street by the railroad tracks and I couldn't believe how many people were out there without jobs, living on the streets, sleeping all over. We're worried about one guy got killed, we've got all these people that don't have anything to do. We can, we can actually employ these people. We have got the re, a lot of resource, everything we have, we're just putting it on the wrong way. We're, we're letting it go and took out to all different agencies. If I had time to pour it, get the money, there's none, nothing left. So we have to find a way to control that, but it's us. And until we have meetings constantly, this is not something you do in one or two, three meetings. We've got to constantly be aware that it's happening to us.
Official, if you're an elected official, that's not that.
Yes, well, again, we can't fight against each other because we're on the same program. It's not the police. The police have been given that right because they need to get a lot of re, of money to pay themselves. They got to have the attorneys, the judges, and what happens is it all comes down to us. We're the last ones to get anything.
The second poorest state in the nation is because of the political corruption.
And Mr. Ramon, let everything stop and then you don't get questions.
One eighth of the percent are true. Feel this call.
Well, that's, that's what happens. We saw this 650, 90.
Angel, tell him about the statistic. Everybody thinks the mayor won by 77% of the vote, but, you know, he can't. We need to hear what he won by, because there's a reality that you can't recall. Listen to the stats. I think the stats are really important because the paper pulls up. He got 77% of the vote, you know, he can't.
We've lost control of our media vote. They don't tell us what we wanna know. So if, if we're gonna continue to listen to the media business for the people, then we've, we've got to, again, just start figuring out what is being told to us and decipher it. There's a way to do it. And you've got to use common sense, practical, we've got to be practical. You can't throw good money at the bad. And lies the trade-off. We've gotta give up something to get something and it's gonna be that way and it's not gonna change. I keep saying.
31 and 32, 31 and 32.
I can tell you, this won't let up until we wake up and change it ourselves. Because we're made of a country of people that govern ourselves. And that's what we're given. And until we do that, we're not gonna make it happen. It's not gonna happen by us, ten years of police. That's one portion. We have a whole system that has gone bad. That's my study. And I can tell you, until we change ourselves, we're not gonna do anything. But we have the power and I think Albuquerque's a place to start.
Do you have specific steps in mind for this process?
I do, but I can't give them to you in, in one meeting. But I do know what we have to go to, I'll, I'll be very honest with you. I do have all the solutions, what we have to go to. And I think once we know that there's a pattern that we can follow and we all follow knowingly, first of all, we've gotta wake up that we do have this problem and we know that, we're here, we're the people that know. But we have to get more people and we have to act together to change things. There's no other way to do it.
You have specific information about the election here?
You know what, I'm not really, truthfully, I'm, I do not like the system the way it is. So I don't care because I know it's never gonna work for us. I'm sorry, it, it's outdated, it's not working anymore. Tell me any one part of the system that is working for us, I'd be really surprised.
But do you have specific facts about the election?
No, I did not, I just, I was scared about that. I care about what we have to do to make a change. And there are, there is a program set up for us naturally that we can follow. Now, I don't wanna take up too much time because a lot of people wanna talk, but I would love to see more meetings of you, of you all. Because I can't tell you that there is a plan and we can use it, but I can't say it in 45 words or less.
168 million APD acquired 2014, 168%. And 60% into an institution, excuse me, that's more than 60% of the state. Well, doesn't suit the back.
You, you've got to remember that if we let ourselves, it's almost like two or three guys are going to the store and one has a suit on and the other two look like they're really bad guys and they go around making it look like they're doing something and the guy with the suit walks out with all the goods. Okay, that's what we're doing, that's the kind of program we have. And I don't wanna put too deep in that because it's overall part of the same thing. But we have let our energies be taken away from us. And how many times in our lifetime, I'm 72, and how many times have we hurt into our life, we can't really survive because it's gotten too big and somebody else's problem? Well, now it's become our problem.
Well, one of the things that, Angel, I might know a lot of people. I want to have to Mr. Mitchell because I think his story is extremely important. Jonathan, you gonna come up and say something or you gonna have Mr. Mitchell's dad say something? All right, sir. One, one thing that I think is extremely important here, and you can bring the culture up if you like. If you look around the room and everybody you see today in this room, they're all so different. It's the hugest mosaic of people on earth, where everybody is. You know, we have, we have people here from Mexico, thank you, we have people here from New Mexico, we have people from out of town. I wanna say this to you, very, very country, especially the women from Connecticut, you may get anything. We have a woman here who's actually working the homeless program, who's here in, in working with DOJ. And she's been working on that program there. We also have the police chief that worked on the reconstruction of Connecticut here. I think we need a municipal policy, I'd like to come and talk to you. I'd like to come and see you. If you're unsatisfied with what you're gonna get in there, please, call them. You have to call them. And as a stranger, you let us off, we don't call them. This gentleman is very, he has something to say, sir.
My name is Isaac Mitchell and I am the father of Jonathan, Jonathan Mitchell. Jonathan Mitchell was in Iraq, combat veteran. Went over 7,000 miles and fought for this country. He fought hard, came back and died during the sands of Mexico. He was allowed to die, he was denied medical care. Denied medical care. His blood drained into the dirt. Police did not let BMNTs come to help him. He was only shot in the arm. Jonathan Mitchell tried to protect his brother standing in front of the barrage. He was shot and killed by a vigilante. This vigilante is now free, walking the streets. The district attorney, the head of the department, has refused to charge Donnie Pearson with the murder of my son. We are now fighting this. The state, we are now investigating the case. And we should hear from them in approximately three weeks the results of their findings. In the meetings that we have with the district attorney, they were sitting there and they tried to exclude evidence which would damn the case against Donnie Pearson. We had evidence to show that this woman delivered a shooting. We had evidence to show that he had planned to kill my son. That is why the decision to this day is not being made. Several people have been killed. How many of these cases has the DA ruled justified?
Gang stalking.
Every single one.
Gang stalking.
Every single police shooting that has ever happened in the state of Mexico has all been justified. They never unjustified any shooting, including James Boyd. And that was clearly unjustified.
But this guy was shot by a criminal and I believe it was a gang stalker. Because gang stalkers are actually, yeah, you're probably a gang stalker. Gang stalkers are actually working for anti-actual banking firms. They're targeting our veterans, our police, our firefighters.
Hey, Jennifer, you're almost up next.
Great, so I just wanted to tell you that, that I'm, I believe he is a victim of gang stalking. I would encourage you, where should get on the internet and research gang stalking.
So what, what I'm saying is that, is that the district attorney, this district attorney in this case here is, is bound together at the hitch, this is what I call a proxy killing by police. Donnie Pearson was given a nod in the week by police officers. He was allowed to go free, but my son is veteran, died. My, his brother, who tried to save his life, was given him CPR, SWAT team came and pulled his brother Ben off of him. No one gave Jonathan any more, he laid there and is fine. Benjamin, his brother, was handcuffed for seven hours. Seven hours. They took him down to, they took him down to the police station. They put him in a cell, there was a post there, and they handcuffed him to the post. He was never charged with anything. Never charged with anything. See, we don't hear this in the media, why? Why don't we hear that story? Why don't we hear the story of the video that shows Donnie Pearson driving on the wrong side of the street? 11:30 PM, a dark street, wrong side of the street. His lights were not on, on his vehicle. He stopped to two parked cars and fired. Why don't we hear that point of view from the media?
Because the media is also working on the cause, I mean, it's just.
The media is about to sell us.
So I wanna, I wanna be sure I'm gonna thank you that.
They never report anything that's true.
I wanna thank you that there, that's right. And what I wanna tell you today is that we are fighting this. We don't know what the awful, awful outcome will be, but we are fighting this. Thank you.
A radio reporter was asking me about the case of Jonathan and I was telling him. And then he asked me, well, what are you asking the DOJ to do specifically about this particular case? And at the time, I couldn't really come up with anything. But later I heard Maria or one of the other speakers mention profiling. And clearly, that was a problem here. When the police arrived on the scene, they quickly assumed that the black, that the black people are the bad people. So they pull Ben and handcuffed him. Ben, that was trying to save his brother Jonathan. And then they allowed Jonathan, who they assumed was the bad guy, lie there and bleed to death. And this has got to stop. I'm not sure how to word it in the consent decree, but definitely profiling, racial profiling, needs to be addressed in the consent decree. And I'll finish by saying that there are people that are calling for a grand jury investigation of the APD, and specifically, some of the cases that have not been directly tied to APD, like the Jonathan Mitchell case, also the Mary Han case, the Tara Chavis case. Like, they finally did arrest Officer Chavis, but they forgot about how APD rushed down to another jurisdiction and interfered with the crime scene there, in that case. That should be under investigation also. Anyway, it's a call, a petition, calling for a grand jury. And it's not the kind of grand jury that the DA calls. This is, this is a different type of grand jury, that would not be spoon-fed by the DA. So if you're interested in signing that petition, I'm gonna leave it here on the table with your pen. Thanks so much for listening.
All right, but as you can see, there's a lot, first of all, we tracked to nineteen-seventies, the incidences of shootings and police violence. We now, we have, in Rondy, we have the individual's name, the officer's name, the day it happened, how it happened, who the witnesses were, and finally, what was done. And that was done by the Martin Luther King, by the Source Foundation. So if anyone wants to get a hold of me, I'll send it to you, because it's amazing, this whole issue. All right, I think you're, who's up next? You see? Oh, you're, you're...
Yeah, I'm actually...
This young woman is gonna...
Well, actually, she was too. Oh, she went, she left.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, I'm a daughter of a military police officer, and he serves in Vietnam. And he actually received his Medal of Honor, just to sit out in Vietnam like, because there was a culture of pretty big chaos and violence out there, in Vietnam, where you know, if you got a medal, you're pretty much more ready to get home. So, you know, my family has, you know, invested a lot of time, and money, and blood, and effort into this nation. And I first thought of deciding to make taxpayers from recordings of military. And I wanna tell you, if we don't have a police force, we're not gonna have any more taxpayers. We're gonna get it. Okay? Because, I'm telling you, there's a culture of serial killers in our city, okay? And the public here in Albuquerque was complaining that Albuquerque Police Department wasn't doing enough to try to curb the violence, back when they found, back in two thousand six, when they found the thirteen girls murdered. And they did it. They locked up a lot of the serial killers, the homicide rate has gone down. That's what a lot of people aren't crediting the department with. Okay, they're focusing on all these criminals that have, you know, histories of violence, a lot of them are on drugs, you know what I'm saying? And back in two thousand six, I mean, the whole city was angry at APD, because they're like, you're not doing enough. You know, they found thirteen girls and a baby, you know what I'm saying? And, you know, they finally, you know, got rid of the serial killer problem, okay? And they were forced to hammer down because of these thirteen girls, because it made international news. Okay, I mean, people were going to the mayor, you know, complaining that they just don't care about the community. So, you know, they followed procedures, and started hammering down on serial killers in our community. And how do I know? Because unfortunately, I used to be an alcoholic, and I used to use a lot of drugs, because I suffered from PTSD, and my husband was killed by a drug driver. And, which I believe was a staged incident. But I want, I came here today to try to educate the public about gang stalking. And actually, a lot of these incidents are paid, people are paying these people to do these type of things. I mean, I know there's a certain amount of isolated incidents where that wasn't happening, but I was looking through a lot of it, and it looks like a lot of these shootings are being staged. How come there was three people spitting guns in the police's face this week? That's ridiculous, you know, and how do I know? Because I have lived with serial killers, I have lived with hitmen, I have lived with drug dealers. They're very vicious, they're very violent, okay? They love to have sex with dead bodies, it's a very vicious culture. They're talking, they're talking about the culture of APD, you ought to see the culture of serial killers. Okay, the culture of serial killers is disgusting. Okay, they love to kidnap children, they love to break into your home when you're not there, poison your food. They love to do all kinds of things, these gang stalkers. They love to loot your luggage on your car. Okay, and I'm here to speak out at the color-coded gang stalking in Albuquerque. And I encourage you to investigate it on your own, because you may be a victim yourself, and not even know it. Okay, and a canine handler's dog was poisoned, he was an airman, his dog was poisoned going home. This is a police officer who managed to... And gang stalking is a big problem within the United States, not globally. And I learned about gang stalking from US Embassy officials, okay? And these gang stalkers are ruining our community, and the objective is, okay, is to overthrow our government. Okay, so the foreign troops can't come in here and take over our country. I don't know if you understand, there are foreign troops stationed at Harlem Air Force Base. And there are troops stationed here, at Harlem Air Force Base. We have tons of foreign troops here on our soil, okay? And I'm gonna tell you, if there was a foreign invasion of these troops, the base can't help us. I have boyfriends who are base police, and they told me they can't do nothing for us. And if German troops are coming here, or British troops, or any type of foreign troops, did you know that our base can't help us, they have a jurisdiction? You know who our first line of defense against foreign invaders is? It's Albuquerque Police Department. Okay, and a lot of these people are being paid to set up these shootings, so that our good officers get fired. Okay, it's called color-coded gang stalking, and they call themselves the Red Squad. And I know some people like red, they like the red color. But back in the nineteen forties, okay, our enemies were called the Red Squad. Okay, the Reds, okay? What's the color of the Nazi flag? It is red. What is the color of the Chinese flag? Red. And these people, they drive around in color-coded gang stalking crews? Okay, Albuquerque Police have known about this for at least a year now. Because I started figuring out, you know, why do people keep following me? You know, because I actually had to be rescued by SWAT, because they thought I was an actual FBI agent, just because I had a base dinner on my car. And I guarantee, they will have no problem targeting you or your family. And I encourage everybody who may be on drugs and alcohol here, please do get sober, because they know that about you, they target a lot of individuals, and they get paid multimillion-dollar bounties, okay, to kill our cops, to kill our veterans, to kill our firefighters. Okay, they're killing all the good men in our community and good women. I'm telling you, you know how many biologists have died since nineteen ninety-five? There has almost been a hundred that have died. There was a scientist who found just his body, and she's driving mountains. They're killing our most brilliant people, our enemies, our foreign enemies. Okay, and there's a lot of Americans who are working for and banking cartels. And I am here to warn Albuquerque, that if you don't have, the honest people of Albuquerque Police Department, they will come, and they will destroy your life, and try to destroy my life. But thankfully, Albuquerque Police Department, you know, they knew my dad, they knew my dad had a natural reputation. And I'm ashamed to say, you know, that I was, I didn't have an alcohol and drugs problem, because, you know, I was so depressed, I was self-medicating. But I wanted to encourage the community, that the solution, first and foremost, is personal responsibility. I would encourage, you know, this lady to try to, try to think about, you know, ways that we could try to get drug treatment programs in the city. When I was on alcohol and drugs, I seriously could not find a rehab to go to. I literally had, the cops had a kid taking me to the mental hospital, to the mental hospital. There was no rehabs open, okay? And I've been in jail several times, I mean, for parties, for criminal trespass, ridiculous stuff. I've never been convicted of felony or anything. But, you know, like, if you go to a party, and you're not supposed to be there, they can literally charge you with criminal trespass. But the police never gave up on me. I'm alive today because of the Air Force Department. And I would, I would encourage you all to try to get some kind of program going for the drug addicts in this community, okay? People are talking about the culture of APD. You've never seen the cultural, culture of these serial killers. There's several girls who have ended up missing in our community, and no one cares about them. There was a little girl, she was just going to the movies, and she got kidnapped, okay? Organ harvesting, your organs are very valuable, okay? Overseas, a kidney can go as much as thirty to fifty thousand dollars, okay? And I have seen bodies buried in people's backyards. And how do I prove that? I can't prove that. I loved enough to die, you know, I'm a Christian. But I wanna tell you, these, a lot of these people are serial killers. They're being paid by international banking cartels to destroy our police department. And I wanna tell you... No, I'm wearing the flag. I wanna tell you about Tony Adams. He was a firefighter and also a Navy SEAL, uh, in Hames. They found this dead body after six days, okay? They're killing all of our finest men, getting them fired. There's been all kinds of accidents, police car accidents. And I get, I don't even drive anymore, because they could slap a remote right on your vehicle and cause a car accident. And I know this is very frightening, look, they're not, they're not in charge of this.
Yes, I am.
No, they're not.
Well, I am.
Now you're out of control. Now you're out of control.
I'm encouraging you, I'm on a spin, okay? Do you mind, do you mind me, I would encourage you to learn about gang stalking. They're hunting down our finest officers, okay? I'm encouraging you to learn about gang stalking.
Sure.
But, please, I'm encouraging the community, please do try to get some kind of help for our drug addicts here.
Yeah, I got nobody else right there, all right. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Jennifer. Because, you're just turning into a gem.
Because, because a lot of social needs are actually...
There's a lot of stuff you need to say.
Trish, Trish, turn Trish's up the floor.
Sir, Trish is back before, one through the list, we have, you see, we have a few people left, and you're up there. I appreciate your patience.
My name is Trisha Brown, I'm the sister of Kendall and Michael Carroll. Kendall was killed last year by APD, on Chilwood Avenue School, and... Come closer to us.
Come over here, two colors.
But, anyway, they shot the wrong brother. They came to my house, and told me that they were gonna kill my brothers. They went to my grandmother's, and it's like, you can't really prove it, because it's against us.
Thirty-four? Give me a moment. Thirty-four? 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 Thirty-five? Thirty-four and thirty-five?
I've been harassed since, I have a six-year-old daughter that needs a lot of counseling. She's going through a lot of trauma, with her uncle being dead, and she's threatening other people and babies. It hurt me so bad to where I'm kind of a threat to, as they say, because I make all my babies... I have my brother on my leg, you know, I've been through it, and these cops, they don't care. I'm not calling if I'm hooked up, if anything happens, my kids and my family know what to do. I cannot call on the cops, nowhere. I don't care what the situation is. It's been, you know, my grandmother is his legal guardian, she's had these things, she was two months old. His biological mother was there on the scene. From there, they took everything and handed it to her hands. My grandma's suffering, I didn't hear they giving people three hundred thousand dollars over killing their family. My grandma's water off, she's, she's in a mix of cancer right now, and just everything that you can think of bad happening, besides losing a child, is just coming after me, it's like, you got the wrong brother. And we still have one brother coming out in two years that shot the cop. So it's like, how are we supposed to feel as a family, knowing y'all took one and left one?
Excuse me, then, thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six? Oh.
I mean, I've tried, I've tried to kind of calm my nerves, and ask questions, and go to different meetings like this. At first, when it first happened, me and Mary and Diana, I mean, it was hard. Like, we started with just a little group, and I mean, it was like, nobody could really hear us. It felt like we were failing. And it was like, once time passed, everybody started getting their families taken. It's like, we're not alone, and it's like, we have to comfort each other. And they all have babies left behind. And, I mean, you really can't explain nothing, like, these babies growing up, what if something really does happen to where they need them? Like, you can't tell them, well, in the midst of what happened, you can still call on me. I mean, I'm sure there's not a lot of bad cops, but I would just bear in mind, like, all that's been left out, you know, like, as long as I have kids, and they hurt, and I hurt, it's enough for me. But I think I'll...
My name is Mary, my husband was the sixteenth victim of APD brutality. We had a two-year span, where twenty-four men were shot, killed by APD within twenty-seven months. The cop that murdered my husband, has been diagnosed one hundred percent PTSD by the VA. He is still currently on the force, holding a gun with a badge in his hand in the same subdivision, where my husband lost his life, gets an everyday struggle. My husband was a criminal, he did have a criminal record, but it didn't give the cop the right to kill him. He deserved to lose his life, he needed help, he had drug problems. My kids were three, seven, and nine at the time of my husband's shooting. That happened two years ago. My daughter's five now, she was three at the time. She sleeps with her dad's ashes at night. And it's hard to be able to trust police when cops come behind us, and my daughter starts crying, saying, mommy hide me, mommy hide me, I don't want them to shoot you, mommy drive away, I don't want them to shoot you. A fighter shouldn't be afraid of a police officer. They shouldn't be. It's come to the point where my now-nine-and-eleven-year-old son, right at APD, they hate police all over school walls. My nine-year-old son was suspended from school for writing "RIP Dad" on all his paperwork. There are good cops out there, I'm not against police, I do try to support them. And it's hard for me, though, when I'm also being victimized by the police now, continuously being pulled over. I have cops that park on the corners of my houses, you guys can think I'm crazy, I have pictures of it. They're continuously pulling myself and my business partner Dunn and I over, saying we look like suspects that are threatening people with guns, and it's ridiculous already. So I hope DOJ coming in here, with everybody's opinions and voices, something can be done, and there'll be less killings. And I'm hoping that these cops that are murdering our family members, get put in prison for murder. That's what I'm hoping for.
One thing I wanna say is that I have that history. If anybody wants it, I'll email it to you. I'll give you my email address, and then this gentleman is gonna be able to talk to you, and I think you have the information as well. My email address is very easy, it's a lunar, L-U-N-A-R, lunar, at cyber mesa, C-Y-D-E-R, mesa, M-E-S-A, dot com. And I would be glad to email you the history that's been compiled by the Martin Luther King Association. And they track the violence here back to nineteen seventy-one. It's amazing, they give you the individual that was hurt, the rape, the officers, the outcome, for this accepted by the DA. It's the most incredible document I've ever read, and it's really... So lunar, L-U-N-A-R, for those of you who speak Spanish, sometimes it's called lunar, lunar@cybermesa.com, and I will get it to you, and then you can send it to anybody you want. It's a free document. But it'll blow your mind. You say, oh, really? Really, it's just mind-blowing? But the officers need their help now. We know there's a role to play. Now we have to clean house, make good recommendations, support the guy that are really there, and try to move the guys that aren't there through, and see what we can do about our city, and we can pull it together again. And you are on... And you are on, senor?
Yes. I liked it when the police officers were on coffee and donuts. Now they're on steroids, man. Bigging out the tears, trying to be like Muslims, trying to look like the ex-con, am I right? Trying to look like the ex-con. Trying to fight the ex-con. But let me tell you something. When I saw on television, I see six police officers with building clubs and guns and tasers and this little criminal with a little knife about that bit, and you can't take him out? I would have taken him out. I would have taken a guy with one club, pulled a knife on me with a gun and said, "What the hell is that?" You have six cops shooting, six shots in that man? That's chicken shit. That's bad. And I'm going to tell you why these police officers are doing that. Now, please, no pictures, please. I don't need no pictures, man. I don't need no recognition. You know what we need? We need to get our drug officers drug tested weekly because we're becoming like a drug act that we're trying to eliminate on our streets for our children. I'm tired of this. I'm going to tell you a story. I was over here in this big city area and I saw the children looking out the school windows there in an elementary school. And I saw thirteen teachers there smoking cigarettes. I'm going to start with the cigarettes, okay? This is going to take us a few seconds. I pulled in my work truck. I said, "Ladies, this ain't a bus stop." I said, "Oh, no, we know it's not a bus stop. We can't smoke on the school grounds because we smoke cigarettes." I said, "Ladies, would you like me to give you my input about cigarette smoking?" They said, "Yeah." There's always one tip, "Whoa." I said, "Do you have any children?" "No." I said, "You have children, two, three?" I said, "Would you like some of your less than children physically?" They said, "No. What would you do?" I cut off their balls. I'll kill you, I'll send you to prison. I said, "Do me a favor, ladies, teachers of our children, stop molesting our children mentally." You see these movies, Breaking Bad, Seven Long Years? What have you guys done? Promoted it, you get video, you promote it every day. These drugs, these drugs are coming to our city for our children. I'm worried about the children. I'm not worried about you guys. You guys are goners. I'm worried about that little baby. And that little baby, where are you today? But let me tell you something. We have consolation. God save, condone, Father and Father, with everybody God pays, God gets vengeance. But let me tell you about the police officer. I have known police officers for the last forty-two years and they never drew their gun to kill anybody. And they retired. Now you got twenty-seven, twenty-eight victims killed in two years? You're bringing in a mayor? I don't know if he has any part to do it. I know they split the vote and he became mayor. But let me tell you something. Now, hopefully, it goes through your mind, if you don't stop, these movies are coming into our cities. Our city is cursed. Please, I don't need no pictures. Our city is cursed because of those movies and their drugs and all the sex. I'm tired of you perverting my little children mentally. When are you going to start doing that? You want to get rid of a cop? We need cops. We need somebody to protect him and me, the good cop. You try getting them drug tested, I don't care, we're going to get rid of them. All the bad cops are doing all the shootings and killings because they're not in the right
There you go, bro.
Boom. I thought it was working for the cops.
I have a list. This is a grand jury petition. It's up here. There's about six hundred of them in the city right now. They're looking to, again, an official grand jury investigation. And then, among other things, we also have a recall for the mayor. It's going around. There's also on the internet, you can go to petitions Obama. And we have a petition going there, too. We're trying to make sure that every single person here is being heard and we ain't giving it up.
You got the floor. Fine.
My name's Tony Beech. I'm from California. I'm a victim of the LA riots, both LA riots. I got more lumps in my head and more heads in my head from police officers assaulting me over ridiculous charges. Be that as it may, we need more citizen action groups. We need more citizen action groups within APD and within the city council and within our crooked corrupt government.
All right.
Where is Suzanne Martinez in all this? Where is she? Has she said one word? The people of APD haven't even given support or an apology to these people that they've assassinated.
There are apologies right now.
So that's why we need more people.
Oh, yeah, Martinez, that's why she won't prosecute nobody. They trust her husband to copy she has a fair to friendly.
Well, that's okay. She ran on a campaign platform for governor that she was going to fight corruption. What has she done? Absolutely nothing.
Protect the hair, bury the restaurant.
Media is another problem. The media doesn't care about our problem. All they do is pat APD and the police agencies within this state. They cover up the crooked corrupt, they cover up the corruption that goes on in there. They have no right to do that. APD has to be more transparent. I want to see everything. I like to see how many people have been beaten up. I like to see how many people have been, you know, had their behinds kicked by APD. There's hundreds of those cases. Media doesn't say anything about this. Those are the ones that they have to bring out. The media needs to do their part and they're not doing it. They're spending too much time saying, "Oh, our station is on your side." Whose side are they actually on? They're on the state government's side. They don't care about us. That's why we need more media coverage to make sure we get our message out to them. We're not taking any more from APD. It's a statewide problem. It's also not a racial issue. It's a people problem throughout the whole state. So I just wrote down a few thoughts and I would like to see more DOJ meetings and more insight, more citizen insight. We need to get more demonstrations going and we also need to get other people involved, friends of the victims, family members, neighborhood people. It affects everybody, no matter what happens, you know, it affects everybody. It might be a neighbor's children down the street someday, you know, it might get, like, something might happen to them, you know? Or we've just spent too much time with media coverage on APD. We need to be covered. They need to tell our side of the story and they haven't done very much. The thing that makes me angry is when I saw the video of the gentleman in the hills there, two little knives. You know, I mean, they have to figure that people who are homeless, they're entitled to defend themselves. They have no place to go. If they're stashed out in the hills somewhere, they need protection. They might get attacked by an animal, they could get attacked by somebody coming up the hill, you know, or walking the hill. They could be attacked by anybody. But they need to protect themselves. They don't know where to go. They don't know where to go for help. They don't know who to ask for help. But the main thing about this is year after year after year, there's been nothing done. And DOJ, I have to say, what took you so long? What took you so long? It took two decades. The Constitution of the United States is what protects everybody here. They don't care about it. The police don't care about it. Our state government doesn't care about it. All they care about is the money. Our crooked corrupt government only cares about money. On top of that, demonstration as well as having battle plans, police gun assaults of all kinds need to be exposed. Simple assaults need to be exposed. The state of New Mexico forgets three very important things when you go into court: your constitutional rights, your civil rights, and your Miranda rights. And I can honestly say that I don't think there's a police officer in this state that can recite Miranda right correctly because I have never seen anybody get arrested. There's been so many false arrests throughout this state, it's incredible. But those things need to be addressed also. Like I said, I'm not sure there's too many people in here that remember the LA riots, but I certainly do. Citizens, I think, should have the right to arrest police officers as well. These people, these police officers, they killed that gentleman in the hills. They need to be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law without police protections. I can tell you for certain that police do not want citizens involved in any board, in any city council. Make them put you in there. Make them do it. They have to be involved. Citizens have to be involved in the board. They need to get the action board that was just, where the people just, one of those people just retired. Need to put people in the committee. We need to put people in the city council. And we definitely need people, citizens, in the APD to make judgments, disciplinary judgments as well. We will have some power. We will take back the power that has denied us.
Take it back. Do you have a number?
Yeah.
No, I want to be sure you don't use the ear to the demo.
Oh, okay. Officially, you know, really, people cannot trust our government officials, our elected officials, anywhere. They feel betrayed. Who can they trust? They can't trust anybody. Unfortunately, I have to say that I hope this isn't a ruse by DOJ. I really want them to do something. They have to do something. I'd like to see people come out and tell the DOJ they have to do something and they will include citizens.